Can you see it?
Okay, Mike, you're all set.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock, we'll call this planning board meeting to order on June 1st, beginning of summer. Nice sunny day at that, or at least it's ending with a sunny day. So the first order of business is the minutes from our previous meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as recorded.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay. Is anyone opposed to that? So then we'll record that as unanimous.
Mike, before you go too much farther, we didn't state who actually is in attendance.
Okay, roll call. So Mike Steers is here.
I'll read for you. It might be easier. Sal Marinosi.
Yeah.
Dave Boeschmann.
Yeah.
Bob Murphy.
Here.
Richard Ross.
Here.
Mary Satell.
Here.
Mark Cady.
Here.
And then Mike Steer said he was here.
Here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The first item of business is an application for a minor subdivision for the estate of Gorden Waddles. And I see Kathy here and I see
I was hoping that
David Loth.
David Loth should be on soon.
He is on.
He is there. He is there.
Hello, Kathy. Hello, all.
Oh, good. Hello, David.
Okay, Mike, we ready to go?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time tonight. David Loth, on behalf of the estate of Gorden, at the time of his untimely death, owned a parcel of land designated as lot 2-1 on plat 47. Kathy, his spouse and the widow, obviously, is the executor of his estate, along with Bessemer Trust Company and a gentleman, Kevin
Salisbury.
Salisbury. And so the intent of this application, as is stated, is to subdivide lot 2-1 into basically a north half, which follows along the northern boundary of Rockbridge Drive. And so the north half would be just about, just over two acres, 2.153 acres. And the thesaur has designated that as a potential lot 2-4, along with the south half, consisting of just over three acres. It's 3.104 acres. And the assessor has proposed that that lot be established as a new lot 2-5. So the south half is improved with a beautiful farm dwelling. The north half is currently unimproved. And the, I believe in January of 2002, the former owner of lot 2-1 had obtained, through the efforts of Bill Smith, at the time it was called, an ISDS private sewer system. And that was approved. And, you know, upon learning of the potential development, sale and development by the prior owner, Gorden and Kathy decided to acquire lot 2-1 to preserve it and whatnot from future development. So the application, again, is to subdivide the lot. And it, there have been extensive discussions with John Berg of the Nature Conservancy. The intent is, after subdivision, to convey the north half to the Nature Conservancy and preserve it in perpetuity in the form of a conservation easement. And it will fit really very nicely insofar as Kathy and Gorden own an adjacent parcel of land that is also the subject of a conservation easement. It's just to the east of lot 2-1 and just immediately to the north of their current residence, which is plat 47 lot 3. In addition to that, the reason that the ultimate donation to the Nature Conservancy will be a very nice addition is that there is a large tract of land owned by David Borden just to the west of the lot, I believe it's 26-2. It's about 27 acres that is also owned by the Nature Conservancy. So Kathy and the estate's intent, again, is to divide the property into the south half and the north half, and put that north half into conservation. So, as I alluded to, we do have a situation where there was a prior approval for the ISDS that has lapsed. In a subdivision application, one of your technical requirements is to have a current an approved ISDS. This one, again, has lapsed. We have no reason to believe that if we were to initiate that process, which would be kind of silly, but to get that ISDS back in full force and effect, that that would be achieved, especially with the advancement of the technology that, since 2002. So we have every reason to believe that that could be, that this lot could be approved for an ISDS. I do want to just inquire, I can't see if Don Maderos is also joining us. Is Don on the line as well?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Well, Don. So, again, just this proposed subdivision, again, the intent by Kathy is to put the north piece in conservation. And for various reasons, primarily under the Internal Revenue Code, we need to have this property subdivided to be able to take advantage of the tax benefits associated with the donation ultimately. And so for that to happen, we would need a subdivision without any sort of condition of any type. So, again, what we're asking the board, you know, based on the express intent here, and Kathy will confirm, I believe, what I've just articulated, we would need the board to approve the subdivision as presented in the application and on Don's plan. And then, again, we'll proceed to work with John Berg to memorialize a conservation easement and put that in place. And that conservation easement, like I said, would be an absolute terrific addition because of the ecologically sensitive land area just to the west of the subject lot, lot 2-1. And it would be, you know, consistent with Gorden and Kathy's intent and history and achieving the goal of conservation and preserving land and open space in Little Compton. But I would like to just take a minute to allow Kathy to say hello and to just, you know, again, talk a little bit about the application.
Well, thank you, David. When Gorden and I first came here, what we were so amazed with was the way that Little Compton protected its land and how we all had to contribute to conservation in order to even purchase property here. And that is what we actually were very happy to be a part of because it meant that our neighbors and our community would remain as it is, hopefully. This land has three brooks that come down into it. It goes through the watershed into Quixton Pond. It was originally known as the Rockbridge Farm. It goes back to the early 1700s and documented with maps and even on the map was created for the King of England at that time. So it's a very historic area. And what we always wanted was to preserve the area. And so for that reason, we have purchased land around the farm with the hopes of putting it into conservation and keeping the natural area as it is. People come through here, they walk through here, they ride their bikes through. It's an area that is well appreciated by so many in the area. So it would help us a great deal if we were able to put this into conservation, you know, with the tax benefit. I mean, in doing so, we are able to do much more in conservation. Gorden was a tremendous supporter of conservation with the Nature Conservancy, with the Rhode Island Audubon, helping to create that Bristol Education Center 20 years ago when they first got it started. He's also very well-known in New Jersey for his work with the Conservation Audubon, New Jersey. And so that was his wish. And it was just very important to us that we can try to proceed with this, keep putting things into conservation, keep that watershed open, help Quixton Pond, and do the best we can for Little Compton. So that's the purpose of all this. And I guess my heart goes out to Gorden's wishes, as he had wanted. There's more land that could be put into conservation. So that's why I'm hoping that we can get this through without too much of a
I have a question for Mr. Law. This is Sal Marinosi.
Yes, hold.
Is there any reason to believe that an ISDS approval would be anything but a formality? I guess Mr. Maderos could answer that also.
Well, I mean, anything to do with Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, OWTS, would not be, I think, characterized as a formality, Sal. It's just, it's a bureaucratic nightmare. It's a very lengthy process. It would be a completely useless process in this case. It would have no benefit to us. It would be a waste of the estate's resources and Don's resources. So I think I see where you're going with that. And it just doesn't really make any sense to us to go through that process.
Can I just make a correction before we go any further? If you notice on your plan that there's a certification of completeness, that was withdrawn because I went by note six, which said that it had a previous one, which I thought was going to qualify, but it expired in five years from the date of approval. So the certification of completeness was withdrawn on that.
So, Mark, generally, the checklist asks for certification of suitability for a septic system?
Correct.
And so, because normally you don't have a system designed until you figure out what kind of house and how many bedrooms you're going to build.
Correct.
So it would seem to me that if this property had an actual approved septic system at one point, that the property is still probably, we could assume that it's suitable for a septic system. You know, we're not to the point of a design without a house, but the property hasn't changed. So if one was approved at one time, it's still probably suitable to have one designed for that property.
The issue we have is that, once we assign it a lot number, we're saying that that is a buildable lot.
Right.
And once we do that, there's nothing to say that a house may get put on that lot at some time in the future. That's the issue we run into. We ran into it once before. And it cost the town a lot of money. So it's something that's in the subdivision regulations. We don't have it. I have an issue with that, but I'm only one member of the board, so. But it clearly says that we need to have it.
Right, on the checklist.
Correct.
Now, who would attest to that suitability, Mike?
Well, I mean, the test pits, and I think Don and Bill Smith are on. So you dig your test pits and it's observed or where the water table is, and those are submitted to DEM for certification of suitability.
Mike, this is Don Maderos. I can add that. And of course, Bill Smith is on, as you pointed out. Bill did the original testing. He got the ISDS approved and he got a wetland permit approved for development of the north part of this lot, which we're calling 2-4, for a single-family house. That was in 2002, I believe David said. And by 2002, we were well into the new way of doing soil testing. And so the regulations haven't changed much since 2002, is, I guess, what I'm trying to say. You know, we know the land hasn't changed. It was vacant woodland then. It's vacant woodland now. You know, the soil testing that was used then could be recertified under DEM's procedure. If a septic design was prepared for this lot and submitted and the engineer submitting it certified that the soil test results that were approved by DEM in 2002 are still valid because nothing's changed on the property, no land disturbance or changes. DEM usually accepts that as, even though it was expired soil testing. Of course, let's not forget, in 2002, Bill did get an ISDS approved, not just approved soil testing. He got a septic system approved and a wetland permit to allow the work.
So, to get this updated, you would have to get an extension of the original or a new submission?
No, Sal, what they do is if you, soil testing is good for five years. Septic design is good for three. When soil testing, if you let soil testing expire, you can actually revive it after the five years when it expires by submitting a, the processes you have to submit septic design. And if you do that and you certify that site conditions haven't changed and you believe the prior expired soil testing is still valid, DEM will entertain that. And in my experience, when it's similar to a site like this where nothing's changed, people haven't gone in and changed the grades, there haven't been site changes, in my experience, DEM honors that expired soil testing as the basis for the septic design they're currently then being asked to approve.
Okay.
And I did some research on this after talking to Attorney Loth. And recertification is a possibility. It's much more expedient than a complete refile. You know, the possibility of approving this contingent upon receiving that recertification would be an option.
I would entertain that. I mean, approve it as subject to, and when the paperwork comes in, you know, I'm of the opinion that, I don't think, I think our hands are tied a little bit, Mark, about
That's my issue. I certainly do not want to do anything to get in the way of blocking this. But then, in the end, there are certain requirements and we have to abide by them. I don't know whether Mrs. Waddle would be interested in, you know, a contingency approval. DEM is saying that a recertification in a situation like this might be able to be expedited in as little as a month. Of course, it is DEM, so I don't know how much faith we have in what they tell us. But it would certainly be expedited as compared to a new application.
Mr. Law, if there was an approval that we're discussing, subject to, that may help DEM and Mr. Maderos also, to your comments, that may help DEM move this along a little bit if they know this is not going to be used as a residence. It's going to be, you know, the situation involved.
Yeah, so, Sal and Mark, I thank you for your comments here. And I do appreciate your vigilance and your wanting to make sure that, you know, the letter of the law is adhered to on this. I think all of us have an interest in ensuring that Little Compton is kept in its current state and, which primarily is beautiful open space. And that, to accomplish that, there needs to be adherence to the subdivision regs and the zoning regs. And I think we all understand that and appreciate that. What I would like to suggest, in lieu of going the route of the the recertification and dealing with DEM they're still not out of the COVID world yet either, by the way. So what I would suggest is that, or propose, is that the planning board, I can't have any condition on the subdivision, but what we can do is condition, or you can condition any sort of issuance of a building permit on the building official or you, the planning board, being presented with evidence that there is a current ISDS or OWTS that meets with all current regulations. The reality is, this property is never going to be developed, so we have no concern about that condition, which you can put right on the plan. And I think that that might, you know, give you the protection that you're seeking to ensure is in place by having the condition of a rigorous building permit review and confirmation of a new OWTS that's in full force and effect. So that's something we can live with. I don't believe that that would have any adverse impact on the donation insofar as it's a condition of a building permit as opposed to a condition of the subdivision approval.
The problem is that a lot can't be created unless it's considered buildable. So that doesn't work in my estimation because, you know, once we give it a lot number, it's considered to be buildable, whether there's a note on the plan or not.
Right, and I
But the building
I mean, you do it all the time with CRMC. You don't get the approvals from CRMC before you approve items, right? So it's the same sort of thing. I mean, you're accomplishing what you want to. You'd be ensuring that there could be no building permit issued without them either going to the building official or coming back to you and confirming that a new outs is in full force and effect. So I think you've got the backup there, Mark. And again, I am all for the vigilance and wanting to adhere to the regs. I think we're accomplishing the same thing without conditioning the subdivision. We're simply conditioning any sort of issuance of a building permit.
I think the problem I have with that, David, is that the onus is on the town then to police the lot to ensure that a permit isn't given.
They do that, but that's what the building department does. When you go for a building permit, the building apartment will not give you a building permit unless you have a septic system designed for the parcel. I just had it happen where these people owned a lot and we had to get a septic system designed. They wouldn't even let us build a barn without having a septic system because it was a separate lot. So that is the condition.
But the problem with that, though, Richard, is once we give it a lot number, the town is legally saying that's a buildable lot.
It's only buildable if they can get, but it's only buildable if they can get a septic system designed on it. And that's, and so there are so many lots right now that exist that we have as lot numbers on it, but we could not build on it unless we got a septic system designed for it.
You know, Richard has a point there, Mark. He's got a point. In other words, this is a catch-22. You can't build on the lot unless you've got a design. I think the only concern we have is that, in the regs, they say that, in the regs say that we need, we need an ISDS design to say that it's a buildable lot.
Correct. Now, it's part of our checklist.
Not to create it a lot, not to create it as a lot.
Yes, it is. It's part of our subdivision regulations, which means we need to comply with it.
Yeah, catch-22.
I'm confused. You need to have certified suitability in order to create I got a couple, I got a couple of questions. I'm confused on this. Is there a well there?
No. It's vacant. Vacant land.
So it's total vacant land. There's no well there. And there's no septic system there. So we don't know if they can get a well, if they can get water. So they can't build without a well.
Well, water is a little different, Bob, because it could be a shared well. But the ISDS is supposed to be singular to the property that's considered to be buildable.
To do the subdivision.
Is this property, is this property as a whole property, 2002-1, is it registered as a building lot now?
Well, it Well, yeah, it has a residence.
There's a house.
It has a dwelling on it, which has an approved ISDS that services the dwelling on the south half of the property. So it is, I mean, as an entirety, it's a buildable lot. But again, through the efforts of Bill Smith and the former owner, they have established that an ISDS could be approved for the north half if one elected to do so.
Where's the septic system for the house now?
It's shown in plant, south of the house, east of the house.
It's right near the house.
It says approximate location of the septic system, right?
That's correct.
Can I ask Kathy a question? So Kathy, is, when the Nature Conservancy buys this lot, or you give it to them, is it worth more without the certification or is it the same? I mean, if the planning board just leaves it as a lot and doesn't, is it worth more as a buildable lot versus non-buildable lot?
I suppose it would be worth more as a buildable lot, but the important thing to us is that it's put into conservation, so we don't want it built on, so.
I see. I just know that
So, I mean, yes, it would be nicer for us if it was transferred without condition, but it is important to know that it will immediately go into conservation. There won't be any time, you know, much in between that where something else could happen to it.
Okay.
The other option is, and I discussed it with David, and both of us think it's really not a good idea, but there is an option. We could do that subdivision right now if we make that lot not for development, but then it has no value. So, you know, if
That's right, Mark. That's the problem. That's the problem. Just to address Mary's question, so the appraiser who would appraise this would assume buildability, but they can't assume subdivision for purposes of the Internal Revenue Code.
Okay.
So I think our only avenue after hearing all this, to me, is that we approve subject to and get into DEM. and get into DEM as quick as possible. And, and Kathy, if, 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 if we can, if we can approve it subject two, would you accept that? And
No, because, I mean, the reality is that we have a buyer for the house. And this is a conservation buyer, very importantly, who will protect the area, who cares about that. And so that cannot be completed until we subdivide. So we don't, I certainly would not want to wait for for the DEM to finally come, come around to this. It just isn't. It's important that we protect the area and, and we've done so much to try to protect it. It was just very helpful to us if we had some financial return on it. That's basically our bottom line.
My only, my only concern is that
The other option, Sal, is that, you know, as was, you know, mentioned before, we have no problem encumbering the title by having the condition on the plan that prior to the issuance of a building permit, that the applicant needs to demonstrate to either the planning board or the building official or both, that there is a valid IS or OWTS that's in full force and effect. We can put that right on the plan, then it's an encumbrance on title for the issuance of a building permit. So it, it's not determining whether or not, you know, whoever the current building official is, be it Peter or, or someone else down the road, the title is going to reflect that, Sal, because it's, you're going to have, we're perfectly fine with you having that condition on the building permit be in place right on the plan. So it will encumber or, or be a cloud on the title for that north piece.
David, would, would, because of suitability, would Mr. Maduros or, and Mr. Smith be willing to write a letter of certification of suitability again now? What happened?
Nobody's saying anything.
It froze.
Don Maduros, I could, I could certainly write a letter that, you know, based on my, you know, licenses, experience, training, expertise, that, you know, this, this, and based on the prior approved ISDS approval, that this lot could support a, you know, OWTS for a single family dwelling. I, I, I think I can comfortably do that.
About Mr. Smith? Because he did the original.
Yeah, I mean, we did the soil testing. It was approved by DEM. So essentially we could, we could stand behind that as well.
With those two letters included, I'd be willing to make a motion that we accept this subdivision as submitted. Finding that it's within the parameters of the comprehensive plan, noting that the two letters will suffice in lieu of the expiration, of the expiration of the original ISDS design. Anybody want to second that?
No, I have a comment, though.
Go ahead.
If we, if, if this does, if we don't go ahead with this and subdivide this, nothing can be built on this except what is already there, correct?
That's correct.
If we go ahead and with this subdivision, there is no real guarantee that down the road that a house can't be built on this proposed two dash four.
We can put that in the, in the approval.
But how long will that last, Sal?
No, we can't, but yeah, that can't, that wouldn't be able to
You're right.
Bob, you're absolutely right. We, we can't have a guarantee that the lot is going to go into conservation. That kills us from a tax standpoint. So we're, we've been forthright with you. We're not trying to hide the ball on you on that. What I've proposed is that there, either, Sal, I thought Sal's position was pretty creative. You know, Bill and, and, and Don could provide letters to give you comfort on the suitability. Or in the alternative, we could have a, a condition right on the subdivision plan that impacts title that says that no building permit can be issued without the demonstration of a, a current OWTS in full force and effect in accordance with current regulations.
So let, let me throw something else out. The, the, I, I recognize and agree with Mark's concern about septic approval. But if, if, if the planning board would approve contention on the suitability or, or whatever DEM is going to give us after Don and Bill Smith go to DEM, then the, in the, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be, we'll be able to get a read from whether or not DEM is willing to do that and recertify the suitability. And then if they don't, then we'll bring it back in July and, and have to make a new decision. If they do, then Mark and I are in a position to move forward with finalizing the subdivision.
Do you want me to amend my motion?
Well, I'm interested in what Mark thinks about that idea.
Okay.
Well, that was my recommendation in the beginning is that we do a contingent upon.
Okay.
And once that comes in, then we just sign it as if it's in force with no restrictions on it.
And no additional meeting.
Right.
It's just that it's not going to be recorded until we get that information. And if Donnie or, or Bill were to submit to us an acknowledgement that DEM won't have a problem with it, then we could call for the five copies in the Mylar and record it.
Would we need, would we need an actual design or just DEM's letter stating they don't have a problem with it?
DEM saying it's suitable. Yeah, Don, Don Maduros, if I could just clarify a couple of things. One is just to back up to Mr. Murphy's comment. Kathy could get a building permit now and build on the north part of lot two dash one, the part that we're trying to subdivide out. Because this lot contains more than three acres and we know in Little Compton, if you have a lot of more than three acres, you can put a separate detached, single family structure on the property. So, so I, if I understood Bob correctly, he was saying that north part of the lot could never be built on unless the subdivision's allowed. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's my opinion in that regard. The other thing is But you'd still need to have an OTS on it before you could build on it. That's correct. That's correct. So
But you could, you could build a barn on it. You could build a barn on it.
Correct, without plumbing, you're saying, so
Without plumbing, exactly.
Yeah, because you've got a residence there. But, but, but that's not, that's not an issue at this point. The issue is being able to get it recorded in such a way that they can do the transfer. I, I think that the, the best way to do it would be contingent upon receiving notification from DEM that it's suitable. So to, and the other, the other point I wanted to address is, is, is what the current issue that Mark's talking about and we're all discussing, and that is, so, so Sal's earlier suggestion that, that myself and Bill as two engineers could offer an opinion based on experience, prior data and approvals that the lot would support an OWTS, that's, that's one thing. But if you're asking for DEM to certify that, the way that they would do that, as I said earlier, is we would have to prepare a septic design for the lot and submit it for approval by DEM. So DEM will not recertify soil test data. They won't just say, okay, we've recertified it. You're all set. No, they say we'll recertify it only if you send in a septic design with that recertification request. So I just wanted to make sure the board understands whatever decision you make, what, what needs to be done.
Is there, is there any reason that the, if, to your point there, Don, that the septic design that they approved would, could not just be resubmitted if that's the case?
I, I, I don't think we could resubmit an old plan from 98. I mean, there would have, there would have to be updated work, design work done, a new plan and application. It wouldn't be a matter of taking the old one and sending it in. So there is some, there is some level of effort that, that's going to be required to do that.
All right. Well, I still have a motion in place.
It never received a second.
But it's still up. Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Can you repeat the motion, please? I can hear it.
I made a motion that Mr. Maduros or Mr. Smith would submit letters of suitability, of support of the suitability that was originally, all right, let me be clear, attached to the lot. And that we approved the subdivision as submitted with those letters. Because I believe it's, it meets the standards of the comprehensive plan with exception of an ISDS design specifically, which has been, which has lapsed. Anybody want to second that? Come on, guys.
I'll second that.
Jump in at once.
I'll second that.
Good man. Come on, Murth.
So there's a motion and a second. You, Richard, you seconded it?
I'm, I'll second that, yes.
Okay.
But those two letters, yes.
So I, I just want to be
No, I have, I have a question. So if we, if we don't accept it, then we go back to what Mark was saying, that, that, that the, the piece of property has to have a
ISDS.
ISDS?
Yes.
For a property that's going to be put into conservation.
Yes. The, the Mark's suggestion that we, we submit to DEM first before we, we throw in the towel, so to speak, to find out their reaction with the submission of Don and Bill's.
Well, Mike, we already discussed and, and the engineer is already telling us that we're going to be in for a formal submission. All right, now, bear in mind, I believe that the formal submission will move through a little quicker. But a little quicker in ISDS could be a year for
I understand, Sal. I just, the, the, I'm, maybe I'm more optimistic that the, the reasonableness of the history here and the situation. And we're asking, asking for certification. And I, I understand Don's point that they may not accept the, the measure of certification as opposed to a total system update and approval. But I think that, that I'd like to, I'm more for, for giving it a try than, than giving up.
I, I, I'm admirable that, that Mr. Maduros and Mr. Smith would be willing to do that. But I, I still, I have that reservation that it doesn't meet the subdivision regulations by doing that.
I, and I respect that, Mark. I really do. But we have, we have a person who's a, a resident of the town, who's got this difficulty, if you will, and I think it's a hardship. I think it's a real hardship, more than we've seen recently for somebody that's trying to, you know,
Maybe so.
Help the comprehensive plan with
The planning board.
By setting land as a
Party to make sure that the subdivision regulations are met.
At the same time.
And I, and I hate to be disappointing to anybody, but in reality, it's our job to make sure that the subdivision regulations are met in protection of the town. That's our job. And I, and I think that any other decision than what we, what I offered is being derelict in our duty.
But how, how could you be derelict? How could you be derelict if you have a condition for the issuance of a building permit that requires the OWTS to be in place and that encumbers the title of the property?
Because our subdivision regulations say no lot can be subdivided without an OWTS in place. That's what it says.
Well, we We don't have certification. We don't have certification.
The circumstances here in terms of what you're trying to accomplish, I mean, your, your regs do provide you with discretion. I mean, obviously, not every, you know, not every single technicality needs to be adhered to. You got to look at the totality of the circumstances. And I agree, there's, there's a little bit of a, I wouldn't call it a leap of faith, but there is a, a, a bit of a, 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 a long step here that, that we're telling you the property is going to go into conservation. And it's not like you're dealing with a Providence developer here, you know? So, you know, a, again, what I would suggest is that, is, I mean, potentially with the two letters, add the requirement to the plan that there be, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a current OWTS in full force and effect in accordance with the current regulations, not the regulations now, the current regulations at that time. That gives you even more protection. And you're accomplishing what you need to. You're, you're not going to allow a property to be developed without adhering to the, to the the regs and the protections that, that you need. And again, and this isn't, this isn't something that you don't already do routinely with CRMC. You don't obtain the approval of CRMC in advance.
Is it, is it the intent that this new lot, two dash four, will go into the nature conservatory?
Yes.
Is there any, any documentation or any correspondence from the nature conservatory that they will accept this lot and buy this lot?
Bob, that's a very good question, and I know that, that, that there, there has been a, a discussion among John Berg, who unfortunately was not able to make it tonight. He's, he's on vacation in a way. But I believe that John Berg has had a, a, a discussion with Mr. Steers on, on this subject.
Which is correct. I mean, there's, there's, I have no question that this lot is going in, into conservation and being given to the nature conservancy. So that's, that's not the question.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I, I know I'm not on the planning board, but I, I actually have two questions. One, in your checklist, does it actually say that it must have an OWTS? Or does, does it say that it must show suitability for one?
It's, it's certification of suitability.
Okay. Then the second question I have is probably more of a notation. In all of the years that you have all been on the planning board, have you or have you not ever offered waivers for other types of subdivisions? Whether it be a road length or
Yes.
Road footage.
Definitely, that's occurred.
If you have two letters from two civil engineers saying that the suitability is there, you also have the attorney and the landowner saying that they're willing to put a restriction right on the plan so that that is in the title and cannot be built on until that OWTS is approved and given to the building official before issuance of a building permit. Personally, I don't see where the big problem is. You've got assurance that it's going to be going into nature conservancy hands. There's no question there at all. You've got your insurance that it is, you've protected the town and you're subdividing a lot that you know will not be billed on unless it's given the right protection with the OWTS and, and DEM. That's just my two cents.
Thank you.
And I think that means we're doing our job.
I think you are. I just, I don't, I, I'll shut up. I, I said what I wanted to say.
Thank you. So Sal, would you, would you restate your motion, please? Well
Oh, Sal, if you can speak into Dave's microphone. Oh, you know what, Dave? Your microphone's not on. Hang on a minute. I'll get, I'll get Sal to be able to be heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right.
I, I, I'll make a motion to accept this subdivision with the caveat that Mr. Maduros and Mr. Smith will write letters of certification that the, the lot in, the lot in question that the, the lot in, the lot in question meets the criteria for suitability. And also that it did at once ha, at one time have an ISDS design which had lapsed. Also in my motion, I, I say that this subdivision is in line with the criteria set in the comprehensive plan. And in my mind, it's what the comprehensive plan looks to in conservation of land in the town. Now, do we have a second?
Do, it, it, were you going to add the, the the restriction of not being able to get a building permit?
Yes, yes.
Right on the plan.
Yes. Further that a building permit will not be issued for this lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sal, can you specify lot two dash four?
Lot, that would be in my motion. Lot two dash four would be, would be marked, the, the, the caveat would be marked on the plan that lot two dash four could not be built upon unless an ISDS approval was submitted.
Hmm, no. I thought we were going to say that it couldn't be built on, that it was going to go into the National Conservatory.
Nature Conservancy.
Nature Conservancy, Nature Conservancy.
If that's what you want on it.
Yeah, that won't work. That won't-
That won't work. What, what he was saying-
The law said that that was not possible.
Right.
Because you're not submitting a buildable lot, then.
It's just saying that on the plan, it will state that no building can be built unless there's the suitable septic system designed for it.
Right.
Which will become a moot subject once she deeds it to the Nature Conservancy.
Correct. Exactly.
So we have a motion and we have a second from Richard, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Could you do a roll call, please, Carol?
Yes. Sal Marinosi?
Yes.
Dave Boeschmann?
Yes.
Mary Satell?
Yes.
Bob Murphy?
Yes.
Richard Ross?
Yes.
Mike Steers?
Yes.
Mark Cady?
No.
Uh, that's it.
Thank you all. We very much appreciate all of your efforts.
Good luck. This is well.
Okay, onward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Good night, Kathy. Yes.
Thank you.
Our second item is an additional application for a subdivision by, for Gail and Sylvia on Amy Hart Path. And I believe Bill Smith is, is going to present this.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
What we have is a, a 10.5 acre parcel on Amy Hart Path. It's immediately east of a property that was developed in 2019. This Sylvia's owned, own that particular property. Gail and Sylvia is the owner of this property now. RL Development, Building and Development is the applicant. Richard LeBlanc is here with me tonight from RL Building and Development. And I don't know if you can see me or not, but I, I can see you folks. What we're proposing is that the lot be cut into five plus acre parcels. There's a, a small wetland that runs along the eastern edge of the property and, and isolated wetland that's along the northeastern portion of the property. The, what we, we'd liked, we've done soil testing. They've been approved by DEM. We've submitted septic system plans to, to DEM. We're waiting those, those results. Ultimately, what we would like to do is that after the two lots are created, is to come back to you with a one-time-only subdivision served by a, in gravel driveway. Would run right up the middle of the, the proposed boundary line. At this point, we're, we're trying to create the two lots. The, one of the folks that's dealing with Mr. LeBlanc has a, and I'm going to probably get this wrong, but bear with me, a 1031 exchange commitment for late June, and we're, we're trying to see if there's, there's a way that we can get this, this approved so we can satisfy that. And then we would come back to you for the, the further subdivision and the road design and that, that sort of thing. Again, we've, we've done the soil testing. We've designed the septic systems. We designed for four bedroom systems each. There were no issues, no variances that were required with the septic systems. We're, at this point, we're just waiting for those, those approvals. I was, was listening in on your prior, prior discussion and I, I, I sense some of the concerns of the board. And we're, we're in a bit of a bind because of the 1031 exchange and the deadline there. It would certainly be, be agreeable to, to try and do something with, with some sort of a building permit restriction if this could go forward. Even a restriction on the, any, any further subdivision. There's no intent right now to break ground immediately. But there's a financial issue that we're trying to, trying to accommodate.
So, but Bill, you have suitability for each one of these lots, do you not?
Yes. We, we-
So you have-
We have, we have approved, we have approved soil testing results.
Okay. And, and you have frontage?
Correct.
And you have area?
Yeah, plenty of area, plenty of frontage. Again, we're just waiting for the, the approved septic system plans.
Yeah, but you need that to build, but you don't need that for us right now.
Bill, I, I have, I have two concerns. One, I'd like to see a note seven added that the building line will be 70 feet from the edge of the travelway. In case Amy Hart Path ever has to be brought up to standards, their house won't be right on the edge of the travelway.
Okay.
And that you have Ralph sign and stamp, uh, sign and date his stamp on the plan that you submit for recording.
Okay, now, now, if you look to the certification, that's where the signature and the
Right.
date are typically, and that's, that's, that's a board of registration rule. I, I'm sure he could stamp, he would have any objection. All right, stamp and sign was-
You know, no, I, I, I had the plan folded when I looked at it and I see that now. So just, if you could add that note.
Okay.
And I, I would have no objections of making a motion that we give this preliminary and final plan approval.
Okay, before we do that, can, a couple of things, Bill.
Yeah.
We, we, of course, have our standard two B sets that are going to get changed.
That's correct. Yep.
And this is not a proposed administrative subdivision.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and we need to make sure that on Amy, where, where the new lot intersects on Amy Hart Path, that we have bounds.
So,
so there's no bound where the, the-
Okay, in the center line. Yeah, with the-
Center line.
Yes, okay.
And normally, we would have some, you know, I understand that all the complications along Amy Hart Path, but generally speaking, we, you put an iron pin or something at, at the change of direction of a property line, so.
You could offset it with the detail.
If, if we can offset it, because right, that's going to be right in the middle of the-
Oh, no, yeah, I don't mean right in the middle of the road.
Okay.
I'm with you there. Not in the middle of the, the travelway because, but it's where it intersects with the, you, you've drawn the the 20-foot.
But would, would we do it on the right of way? Could we do it along the right of way as opposed to the center line of the roadway?
Yeah.
Would that be agreeable?
Set it beyond the edge of the travelway and then just show us the detail for the, the three locations or two locations.
So, Will, would you want one at north and south and, and the center where the new common boundary is?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we've got a bound that we have to set in the back
Yeah.
at, at the common center line. The rest of it looks like it's pretty, it's pretty well bounded. So, okay.
You're going to do, you're going to do a motion, Mark? I already did. Oh, second it.
Okay. So.
See how easy it is when you follow the checklist?
So-
I knew you were going to do that.
Carol, could you please do a roll call for us?
Sure. Sal Marinosi?
Aye.
Dave Boeschmann?
Aye.
Mary Satell?
Aye.
Bob Murphy?
Aye.
Richard Ross?
Aye.
Mark Cady?
Aye.
Mike Steers?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll get this revised plan to you shortly.
Super.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
You too. Thanks. So, last item of business is planning board business, little update on the dotted line. I think in your packets, you got a copy of the note that I sent to Mr. Mushin with regard to his, the, the planning board's discussion and, and asking if they'd like us to work on it. They, he, the council's last meeting, they had a discussion on that subject and formulated a committee, which is having its first meeting the day after tomorrow at six o'clock to discuss this subject. And I would say with the, the council discussion was, was broad and, and the, the, there's still not a, a clear understanding of what a dotted line is by many people, I'm going to say. So I'm hopeful that on, on Thursday evening, that the, the, what a dotted line lot is will be understood by all and then we can begin to discuss.
Are we aware of who's on that committee, Mike?
Pardon?
Are we aware of who's on that committee?
You are not, and I'll probably have to a, ask some assistance from, I'm on the committee. Anya's on the committee. Dick Humphrey's on the committee. Tony's on the committee.
And the solicitor.
And, yeah, I said, I thought I said Dick Humphrey, but anyway.
Do you need anybody else?
No, I don't think so. Oh, and Denise is on the committee.
Yes.
I think that-
Sounds like you got enough.
So I'll, I'll, unless, I mean, you got information, unless there's some any comments that you want me to carry forward, otherwise I'll, I think it's sort of, stay tuned and I'll let you know what what the next steps are.
So be it. Looks like he did a lot of work on this. There's a lot of dotted, dotted lines out there?
Denise's office did that.
Yeah. But there's a lot of dotted lines out there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like maybe 200?
Wow.
Something like that.
I make a motion that we file our correspondence in the appropriate receptacle.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Well, go ahead, Sal.
Is anybody opposed?
No.
That's unanimous.
Go ahead, Sal. You can make the next motion.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
All right, Sal, I'll second it for you.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
Anybody opposed to that? No.
No.
Are we, are we going to meet in person in July? Probably not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've got to get the governor to release his restriction that we're mandated to do Zoom and live streaming.
Okay.
In order to meet in person and do that, you have to be set up for hybrid, which is a lot of monitors and cameras and stuff, and we just don't have it yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good to know. Very good. Well, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Stay safe.
Enjoy June.